I'd like to call the meeting of the planning board October 30th, 2018 at 7:35. The board, motion.
So motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ananamous. Okay, do we have any invoices?
I do not unless you do.
Good night. Okay. I'd like to approve the minutes of 10:09, 2018. Motion and second.
So motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ananamous. Third on the agenda is the changes to zoning by law amendment to recreational marijuana. So. And this was advertised twice in Eagle.
That's correct, on October 16th and October 23rd.
Okay. All right prohibiting recreational marijuana. To amend the town zoning by law by adding a new section 7.6 recreational marijuana establishments prohibited. That would provide as follows, and further to amend the table of contents, add section 7.6 recreational marijuana establishments prohibited. And further to amend section 4.5 table uses to add recreational marijuana establishments as a prohibited use as follows. 7.6 marijuana establishments prohibited. Consistent with general laws, can I say mass general laws? MGL instead of GL?
That's correct.
All right. Chapter 94G subsection 3A2, all types of marijuana establishments as defined in 935 CMR 500.002, including marijuana cultivators, independent testing laboratories, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, or any other type of licensed marijuana related businesses shall be prohibited within the town of Groveland. This prohibition shall apply in the town upon approval by the voters at a town election. And then section 4.5 under uses, it's prohibited uses recreational marijuana establishments. R1, R2, R3, LBB, I, and completely in and of the town of Groveland as a. Once we vote on it, at the town meeting first and then on the, is it just going to be on the ballot or is it?
It will be on the town meeting for the zoning by law change and it will also be a ballot vote put up to the voters at the next general election.
That's in November?
Yes.
Okay.
So the community was a yes community, so in November of 2016, the town of Groveland by a general ballot vote voted yes on question four. And then in order for the town to prohibit the use, they need to go back to the ballot and the town needs to vote in favor of prohibiting the use as well as prohibiting the use within the zoning by law.
Okay, but it's going to go before town meeting vote first?
First, it's going to go before town meeting on November 26th, I believe the special town meeting is. And then it will go before the voters, the next general election in November. The moratorium will be extended till the June 16th, 2000, I think it's June 16th, June 30th, 2019.
Okay, but when the, it goes before the voters on the ballot, I mean that's in November as well.
From my understanding, yes.
Not before. All right.
Should we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Sure.
Make a motion, open the public hearing for. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, board have any questions? Or they chew them all out? General public. Any questions on what's going on? Medical marijuana.
This is recreational, not medical.
Recreational.
Correct, yep.
Thought it was always medical.
It's, my, my question is, it's a temporary.
Oh, yeah.
I can see it, the section seven.
Yeah, it's what, June 30th, 2019?
So it's just temporary till then?
Yeah, then what happens?
Yeah.
So the, the moratorium is just to allow the town to get all of its regulations in place prior to it going into effect? So under the new cannabis control commission, they originally, we originally had a moratorium on all recreational marijuana until December 31st, 2018. They have allowed communities to extend that moratorium so that we can all get our regulations in place whether or not we allow it or do not allow it. So we're extending it until the June 19th timeframe, uh, June 30th, 2019 timeframe, so that we can get our zoning by law, our general by law in place, get it out there to vote, and then take the necessary steps to confirm that through a ballot question concerning the prohibition of recreational marijuana in the town of Groveland.
Are we going to do all this stuff again?
No, this is just for the zoning by law change specifically right now. After that, we will need to go forward with a, an actual ballot question.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, I don't have any.
Any, any questions at all on this?
No.
All right, everybody knows what we're doing.
Would you like to motion to close the public hearing and make a recommendation for town meeting?
I, make, uh, any public?
No, he asked.
No, yep, okay.
You're making a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve this. Uh, until, when is it?
Well, this would just be to approve the zoning by law changes.
Zoning by law changes.
Or favorable recommendation for town meeting.
For town meeting.
Any news?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Could we also close the public hearing for that?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing at photo seven, forty-five.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Okay, Maple Street and Oak Street, do a little home.
Can we make a motion to open a public hearing?
Make a motion to open a public hearing, Maple and Oak Street. Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Evening. My name's William Holt, I'm at WGH Engineering and Survey. And Thad Berry is also my associate here with me today, PE. And we're proposing a four lot subdivision on eight and a half acres. It's located off 733 Salem Street and Washington Street. The address, access of Washington Street is between 149 and 153. So we're proposing two short roadways and cul-de-sac turnarounds to access each of the two sets of lots. Lots will be one acres each and conforming with the zoning. So I'll discuss, I'll discuss Maple Street first, which is located off of Salem Street, which is 733 Salem Street, which is where the old park.
Can you turn that so that we can see it? The board has a copy in front of them. They have problems.
So the parcel is, is what they, eight and a half acres, located off Salem Street, this area. It's about here, and then off of, off of the street, this area. Maple Street, which will be right in, uh, 300 feet west of Washington Street intersection. Is a 285 foot proposed roadway to serve two lots, each being an acre. This is the ballpark, the actual design of the roadway. It's about 285 feet in length from center of the, to the street. And slopes from property down to Salem Street, about 7% maximum grade. So it's both in two acts, two, access to two lots. Close house, and, and close substances, which we, uh, performed already with a ballpark. Then extend water from Salem Street up into the project, and then hydrate. Also then extend electric service and gas. Probably just property to serve the two lots. There are mill battens associated with this Maple Street subdivision in these two lots. The battens is located in the back out here. So these two lots will not have any conservation issues, and there's no problem. Due to the size of the project, with being the two lots, we're trying to, and keeping the stormwater management regulations, we're closing the long stack design. What this means is it's not limiting amount in previous area by reducing the width of the proposed roadway. And to offer recharge groundwater. Various means, one of the, we'll install group runoff infiltration units on each of the houses. And driveways will have infiltration trenches on the sides, so take care some of the water that's off the, the floor. Ridge molding, you have to have 24 feet of pavement, two feet of curving and a pile of stylists, and then one to give us pavement. As we're proposing, it's 15 feet wide, that's travel solely, which is nearly 50% of the required pavement. And the way we got the sign is we're going to have drainage through the cul-de-sac. We're grabbing towards the center of the cul-de-sac, we're going to install a detention, fire retention, stormwater management area, which will discharge two swales on either side of the roadway. Help check the even, and it's water quality swales, which will secrete the water. And also infiltrate some of the water before it goes down to the front. And then we'll be entering a catch basin which is on the site, which goes into the drainage network and expansion stream. There will be no offsite drainage increase from the development. And then the rest, Maple Street, which is off of, off of Washington, which is located in this area. And that's suddenly on the intersection of Washington and Salem Street, between House 149 and 153. About 66 foot right away between the two of those. It was going to be, uh, partly a 20 foot roadway to serve the two lots in the back of that property. The rest of the battens in this area, it was flagged by Seakin Environmental. And we're proposing 20 feet of roadway, same, same idea, we're going to do 16 foot pavement, reduce the amount in previous area. Drain to the center of the cul-de-sac, or else we drain it, mitigation. We just charge up into the battens on the street and mitigate it with void. And we're going to have water service, gas service, and electric service in the room, on the two lots. The roadway, the houses will have group runoff infiltrators. Driveways will have infiltration trenches on the side of them. And we have septic located as we've performed them, with the water help. Now, this roadway slopes all the way into the property, from the front to higher, and exposed to the back. Proven 1%, we grab those slopes to the west. And all the runoff will go down to the cul-de-sac and treat it. There will be no runoff up into Washington Street at all, no ties any, drainage to Washington. There is drainage in Washington Street, but we can tie into it, we do too, just runoff comes onto the side. Mentioned before, the roadway comes up, has a crest up top there and has a high spot, but then you just have to go back down again on the backside. So putting a, a, a tension point in this area, and runoff will come down to these swales, flooding the, the inlet, and then into the, uh, drainage, this area. We have, we have, do have to go to conservation for the two lots off of Washington. Again, we have battens near the buffer zone, so we have already filed with the RDA with the conservation, which will be meeting on November 14th, we'll already give a list of that shortly, um, in the mail. So we have to go before the board, commission to discuss the impacts, the battens, and how we're going to engage in the impact of the, of the construction of the roadway. That will take, it will be on November 14th. I do know that the roadway names will be changed, there won't be Maple Street and Oak Street due to the fact that there's already Maple and Oak Street on the books in, in Groveland. So they'll be changing those names during the definitive stage. I don't know if the board has any questions that they'd like to ask?
Why, why 16 feet on Oak, compared?
16 feet on Oak, the whole way? On both of them is 16 feet, if we're proposing. Well, we looked at various other.
Doing the same on Maple didn't look like it.
It is, it's the same, it's 16 foot wide, with two foot wide, two foot, so it's a total 20 feet width of a drivable area. And the reason we did that is, is basically to limit, limit the amount of impervious area, obviously. We got two lots, 16 feet with the two foot gravel, slowly on either side, 20 feet is wide enough to pass through cars. Certainly wide enough to access with emergency vehicles. Again, there's two houses, so there's going to be limited traffic, probably just the two houses. I don't imagine anyone else will be going down the road, other than friends and family. So we looked at other projects, like Crab Check Way, a few others that were approved in the past.
That's private.
Oh, we're going to keep these as private, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that, these are going to stay as private ways.
So the town's not going to plow these things, not going to fix them, you understand?
Yes.
You're going to tell that to the owners, I hope?
Yeah, there'll be agreement.
There'll be indeed.
In the deeds.
No, what he was, I think we're saying, Bill, one's, both streets are 16 feet wide.
Yes.
But the cul-de-sac on one was 18.
Oh, oh, no.
Yeah, and the other one was 16.
It was because of the battens. I tried to argue it was because of the battens.
Oh, you can't, you can't make the other one 18?
I can make it 18, yeah.
For the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because it's.
For the $800,000 ladder truck they bought.
Yeah, it's, number one, it's, you can hang up a fire truck, I can tell you that it worries. But we ran into a problem of Whitestone, where we have, right in front of the rec center, they ended up with, I believe, 18 feet pavement. And that forces everybody to park up, not just on both sidewalks in front of that building, but also on the lawns, just to get one car through there.
Well, I, I, I am.
But there's only two houses.
Yeah.
I can make it to 18 feet wide, not with 42 feet, and I believe that is a number that I looked up on the, on national requirements for turning radius of a ladder truck. I believe that's what.
No, it's only two houses, so 16's wide enough.
For, for the, for the entrance, but then the cul-de-sac didn't make it wide.
Should be 18, because you know when they.
Come around.
Problem is, you just don't want to get these things hung up.
So it's, it's the cul-de-sac that.
Even in Whitestone, the roads that go behind out, the units, are eight, are 20.
So it's the cul-de-sac that you're mostly concerned with as far as the width of turnaround?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm concerned.
There's 100 people in Whitestone, though.
Yeah.
100 units, Jesus.
We have, we have eight.
Because they only have, they only have max eight buildings per, eight units per building, some six. All right, but they went, they went to 20. Which was, really got us because right in front of the, their meeting place, they should, they had put that at 18, and it's caused no end to problems.
Is, you talking about the turnaround or the?
No, it, it's kind of like, to get whole area, all of a sudden you're going 24 and you hit 18.
Yeah, I mean, these are, I mean, I know there's, there's turns in there, these are fairly straight in and straight out, I mean, there's a lot of roads, it's center street, there's a lot of roads in town that are probably 18 feet wide.
That's an opposed.
I, I know, I'm saying, if it's existing, then it doesn't seem to be.
We're going forwards, okay, we don't want problems.
Well, these, again, these are, these are actually, when you get right down to it, they're 20 feet with the two feet of gravel on either side, so you'll have 20 foot area.
Yeah, they're bloody wide, they're two houses.
Which is, you see more than that for two cars to pass, and, you know, and the fire trucks are going to use the whole road, they're not going to, they're not going to be shy about using the whole road when they go in there, so.
And you're aware that the actual cul-de-sac, we've made it smaller.
Yes, I, I'm proposing reduction in the size of the cul-de-sac.
That's why, that's why we're looking for more hot top in that cul-de-sac, in that turning circle. And it's not just the fire trucks as well, it's, you have a problem sometimes with the trash trucks, if, if it's going to be private, I.
So you'd rather eliminate that island altogether?
If they're going to service that with trash trucks, I can tell you right now, it's like that island has to come in, because if they park a car out in that circle.
Yeah, the trash truck won't go up there, though.
Yeah.
No, if it's private, they're going to, they're going to have to take their.
Salem Street.
Salem Street into Washington Street, which is.
You're going to have to explain that one. It's a long, it's a long walk with a, with a garbage can, I can tell you.
That's why they have lawn tractors and trailers.
Can I ask a question real fast? Uh, Tom Angel, 729 Salem Street. What's the argument behind making it private versus public?
Well, we're asking for waivers to reduce the amount of pavement, we don't, we really don't want this to look like a roadway, we want it to kind of look like a driveway more than a roadway. That's a, that's a, you know, a common driveway type scenario versus a, a full fledged roadway with curbing and sidewalk, and, I mean, there's two houses. What's that?
Are you leaving trees?
There will be, yeah, there'll.
All woods.
There'll be. There are, there are areas that we're not going to be cutting trees, but there are areas where the houses go, obviously, and the yards and driveways go that will be, will be cut. There is a large parcel that's in the back. Three acres of land in the back is, this parcel here that will be left untouched. And, you know, a lot of this area will be untouched, we have, we do have to, you know, it's clear to put these houses in, we can have, build a road like that.
Can I see the, um, the ones down, because I can't see it, I couldn't see it from the house, Jim, so I want to come up and see it.
I'm sorry. Yes, okay, yes. Jim. Need to have them come up and state their name and address.
They have a thing going around.
No, but, but she just wants it for a recording.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep, I'm going to ask everybody to go up to the podium when you want to talk, okay? Right now, it's, let, let the board finish its questioning of this thing, let him go through his whole spiel, and then we'll come to the voters, okay? We'll do it.
You need, anybody that wants to speak, it needs to come up to the podium and state their name and address, please.
I have a thing going around, everybody sign in, name, address.
But if you speak, you need to come up to the podium, state your name and address.
So, if there are any other questions from the board?
And just for the board to aware, I provided in your packets a list of all of the department comments that have been made thus far, that have been shared to preliminary time. And additionally, I put together a list of the waivers that were requested by the applicant, and some of his reasoning for those waivers for the board to go through and see if there's any concerns with those as well. And also please note that the peer review engineer has not reviewed these at this point in time, but they will be doing so shortly, once we get somebody on board.
Do you have names of?
We can talk about some of the firms.
Did we get any more applications? Oh, did? Oh, awesome.
Does the board have any further questions?
No. I don't.
Okay, then, opening up for public comment, I'll let whoever is, who wants to make their comment, please go to the podium, state your name and address, and whatever your questions.
Just one quick question, so Tom Angel, 729 Salem Street. I don't want to speak for everybody, but as we all know, these are all sites that are uphill from us. And at least for my site, my basement's a wet basement, super wet basement. So I don't know, I know we mentioned the liquid load is going to be well maintained and well drained off, but in terms of like the leaching fields, septic systems, I just wanted to raise the point, the concern, that if that adds any liquid load, it's going to effectively make my house float, or anybody else's house around the area float, that might be a, a concern.
Septics, we have, we have septic designs, so that's 600 gallons a day. It rains for five minutes, you can make a lot more.
Yeah, way, way more than that, yeah.
So there's not a lot of septic, not a lot of hydrology involved with a septic, because it's, 600 gallons over the course of a day, and that's actually overestimated. Title V actually says 440, and this town actually increases the amount to 600 for safety factor, and people actually use it about 300, so.
Okay.
If you check the water levels and your water uses, you'll find typically a family of four runs 300 gallons a day.
Okay.
Which is far less than we designed it for.
Sure.
But it's also over time, there's heavy use in the morning, heavy use in the afternoon, and obviously during the day, it dissipates in slowly, and it's how they use, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, septic system, large septic system for a very large, like a school or apartment complex, and obviously more flow, and it's actually what's called the mounding calculation, determining how much water will mound up and infect the front, how water level, so. Those are typically only for 2,000 gallons or more, and we don't do it for septic system for hours because they're smaller, and dispersed out more. More, and we don't do it for septic system for hours, because they're smaller, and dispersed out more, so.
So you've thought about it?
Yeah, and, and we got perk rates, and where's your bed, are we in ten to, ten to fifteen minute rain, and actually some of them in the backside, we're, we're seeing the materials, so it's gonna go right down.
Okay.
Water table's pretty consistent, in the backside, they're flattered, and on the hill there, it's, it's, we have about five and a half, six foot water tables, um, and it doesn't even deal with top floor, and they, you know.
Okay.
Capture runoff, runoff from, um, previous areas, which is what we try to do, that's the whole part of the stormwater management, is to increase the amount of, uh, to decrease the amount of runoff from our site, so it won't, it won't affect people coming down the inside.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Janet Fouth, and I live at one forty-nine Washington Street, and during the springtime, when we have the thaw, the roadway, the proposed roadway between my house and the next-door neighbor is always flooded. Now, how is that gonna affect us?
Oh.
And, and the thing is, the street, the, the sidewalk is way up high compared to the, to the land, now how is that gonna?
There's no sidewalk.
How are you gonna?
We're gonna, we're gonna, when we build our roadway, we're gonna bring it in from the street, at the street level, and we're gonna slope it down to the back, so the runoff from the, from the proposed roadway, which is gonna be, until here, is gonna be collecting these swales on each side, and directed to the back, um, it's gonna be some, some fill put in, right where the roadway is, and the swale on the other side, collect the water, and divert to the back, so all this water's gonna flow to the backside and going to the lower areas of the.
Because we have to use the sump pump, because of the high water table in that area. And, like I say, if there's a lot of snow, or whatever, um, in the spring, we're always using, you know, there's a, really a flood of water there, like, it's like a river, I mean, I just don't feel like I want to have it flowing onto my property.
Well, we're gonna put swales, sort of a ditch on the side of the road.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll direct it to the back, and it won't go onto your property, it'll be caught, because your property's higher than where this road is going.
Yes.
So it's, we're gonna have swales on each side of the road, and it's gonna go to the back, so it won't, it won't flow past that swale, that little ditch, drainage ditch on either side, it will suck the water and direct, direct it to the back, and that's the whole slope, the whole slope of the roadway goes from the, on the, uh, sidewalk, down to the back, so everything will be caught.
Going?
Yep, directed to the back, it won't be going to the side.
Okay, now, the other question I have is, our property sets further towards, uh, Washington Street, we have a property on one side that's way out, that their, their property extends way out to the back, to your property, and the other side also, now, are you gonna build a house in, close to our property?
Well, this is your overview right here. So you're on one forty-nine, you're in this lot?
Yes, yes, right.
Closing the house up here, so this.
Oh, okay. So it's not gonna come down, it's one or two.
Driveway from over here, and, and, so that, this, this perk side, we have to stay outside of this potter zone for the left, and so.
Oh, okay.
Pushing it back toward the, up into the hill.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
I think we need to get, they're gonna give us a continuance, let.
Yes, I have a continuance.
Yeah, 'cause I, I'm, I'm not ready on all these waivers, knowing you're.
Oh, we're gonna do a continuance, then?
Yeah.
Do they have one drafted, do you think? Do they have it drafted tonight, or?
A continuance?
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
All right.
All right, Steve Mace, seven twenty-seven Salem Street, behind our, our property, there's a, a dirt road, I don't think it's a real road, and, uh, my concern is that it's going to hook up with one of those houses. Uh, now, they could theoretically use that as a cut-through to Benjamin Street, would, uh, would that be prevented?
Well, I guess, I guess that would be. Would this house go back through it?
Yeah, this is my house here, see where this, this is, this land?
Mm-hmm.
There's a road here, comes out to Benjamin, it's a, it's a dirt road. Who owns this?
Right now, it's under assessment, it's not formally done.
Who's that?
I don't know who he is, that's the person who owns, owns the assessment now, so.
And this is?
Very, these are all from the assessment.
Okay, so they, they're not gonna have access to this.
No, this lot will stop here, so you can go on this person's property without trespassing.
The road's physical there.
Well, I don't, I just, I think my duty is to be exact.
Right, but I mean, it would be very tempting to, to do that.
Well, I mean, you can't trespass on someone's property legally, so, yes. And I, I don't know, you know, where that roadway is that goes through?
The what?
The right.
Oh, what, the one I made, that's right away?
Yeah, I, I just, yeah, because it, it, it will attach to that, yeah, and it would be like traffic behind us.
It's not gonna happen anymore, I just did that, so I can work with it.
Yeah.
So now, they'll just, once that, those houses fall together.
Will there be a fence there or something?
Uh, there probably just never be anything, it'll be there, those people land, so you'll never be able to put that, or a box of plant boards, it says, but I don't think you'll ever be able to put it, you know?
So it will stop being.
Right, right, that's my dog one.
Yeah, I know. What? No, we're gonna, we're gonna continue it.
Hi, Columbine, one forty-seven Washington Street, um, I just, I need to get a closer look at all, so, if I'm understanding correctly, here is the road in between the boats and the Santos. Okay, and then this is a driveway going up here.
Yes.
And this house, how big is this house?
Um, right now, we're showing, well, that was, what are they, about?
Twenty-eight, forty.
Twenty-five, forty.
And this proposed septic system, is that on the very lowest part of the land that's directly behind one forty-seven?
It's sort of in the middle, probably.
Okay, so there's a hill that slopes up here, where does this house sit, as a, like, on the crest of the hill, on the middle of the hill?
It's more on the middle.
Downside of the hill?
It's more on the middle side, no.
On the downside of the hill, right?
Yeah, on the downside of the hill.
Right, because the crest of the hill is up here.
Uh, over here.
I'm looking at the, well, I'm looking at the topography right, right here, as it's saying. Okay, so this is way downhill, from the crest of the hill.
That's level, actually, the hill's over here, actually. This, this goes, it goes, it goes down, and then that, that'll be over here.
Okay. This is, this is where I live, right here, right in back of me, this is a hill that goes directly up, and this house is gonna be on the lower side of that hill, is that correct?
I look at it.
It's a hill, goes like this, right? This is the top of the hill, the house is gonna be sitting down here, as opposed to up here, is that right?
It's about halfway down here.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
This is the lowest part, and this is, this is the highest part.
This is a private road, this is a private driveway, all of this is in wetlands.
It's wetlands, it's identified by, uh, ordinance?
Well, this is wetlands, anybody that lives there can assure me, this is all wetlands in here.
We're getting public conversation from the board, so we'll discuss it at that point, but.
That's good.
Or do our experts?
So who is, who's responsible for the upheaval of this road, so that those swales that you're talking about are gonna stay in place, and?
That will be the two owners who, who own the properties, they'll have an agreement to maintain it.
They'll have an agreement with, how does that work?
They'll have an agreement with each other to maintain it, so that they will function.
It'll be in their deeds.
It'll be in their deeds.
Yeah, and that, and the new stormwater regulations, the MS four permit that's coming out now, there's a lot of maintenance that has to be done by homeowners.
By the homeowner.
Homeowners, yeah, it will be in their deeds, so when they sell their property, then.
So that wouldn't affect the boats or the Santos on either side, they have to maintain that.
No, no, it, it will be in their deeds, and they'll tell, it'll explain what they have to do in maintaining.
Okay, so when the houses are sold, the people that buy the house will clearly know that.
Exactly.
Yep.
Because the lawyer will sit down and tell them.
There'll actually be an operational maintenance document, it'll be.
Huh?
I'm yet to hear that one.
Oh, well, we did it.
Oh, well.
Yeah, we did it, so.
We've had too many, so.
And how is this house?
I never know.
What's the footprint? Twenty-seven fifty, maybe, around there, it's not a hundred percent determined.
All depends on the market.
And, what's that? Oh, they haven't determined a footprint for any of these houses?
Uh, no, it all depends on the market, I mean, it could be a Cape, or it could be a big colonial.
We're showing a, a, a pretty typical size for, um.
What's that, about twenty-seven, hundred, promise me.
Two floors.
Two floors, so, it's about, I'm thinking, I think, I, if I recall, I think I'm showing a, a main box of twenty-eight by forty, and then a additional, like, where the garage is, of twenty-four by twenty-six, I believe, so, that's what I'm.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
And, and the swales, the swales, the maintenance from the swale is basically cleaning it out, you're gonna clean the leaves out, clean the sticks.
Right, well, that depends on the.
That's, that's, that's good, we're proposing like a grass swale, so they don't have to potentially mow it, re-wack it, or, or just clean out the, the leaves and debris that fall into it, I mean, there's not a lot of maintenance for a swale, in that, in that, in that sense, you know, it'll take a long time for it to fill up to capacity before it affected anyway, so, there's a little bit of self-cleaning that happens, too, as it, as it rains out, and the water rushes down, and washes things away, all seasonal weeds washes away and better, in my view.
Any more questions from the audience, the butters? All right, we, what I did here was questions of water drainage, so.
Sorry, excuse me.
Nobody knows that better than butters, that's all I can tell you. I'm not ready on these waivers at this point, by any means at all, but.
There is a continuance form that if we want to continue to the next meeting, which would be November thirteenth, that we should proceed with that, if the applicant were to be willing to grant us that at this point in time.
Until what date?
Till the next meeting, would be November thirteenth.
Okay, and that's what you want to put on this?
It, yeah, it's just a form that would state that they've continued it, because we have forty-five days to make a decision, or, or approve or disapprove the preliminary plan, and we would have exceeded the forty-five days by November thirteenth, and we don't meet any time before that, so, it would be my recommendation to the board that we continue it, to make sure that we stay within our timeframe.
November thirteenth, but. What I generally see in these things, on preliminaries, is, you know, three meetings?
We can extend it beyond that, if the applicant is willing to do that.
You gonna have one of these, or gonna do it each time, or?
We can do it however the board would prefer.
To and one.
We can, we can set it out and, and put a December timeframe, or January timeframe, or we can do it based upon the meeting, it's, it's, it's at the discretion of the board.
Let's do it by the meeting.
Well, I was gonna say, let's do it by the meeting.
I, I would think we'd be prepared to do it by the meeting, and also, um, I have a question just on the, um, on the consultant, that's gonna be chosen, and, um, there was gonna be two other options to, to choose from, I, I don't know if you've, say, finalized those yet, or?
Yeah.
So that we can.
We, we have selected, we have gone out for a request for qualifications, we have received proposals, um, we have selected four, um, firms to move forward with, so that the applicant may choose based upon those four firms, however, we, we've just, um, informed these firms, so we don't have any contracts or anything in place at this point in time, we can share some details in, in regards to who those firms, firms are, but we won't be able to actually enter into a contract with them until we have those documents, um, from them, so.
Is that gonna take place before the thirteenth, or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely touch base, and we'll have somebody in place prior to.
Okay, and then you can let us know, and we can choose and get that process going before the thirteenth, hopefully, and then we hopefully will have some answers on the thirteenth.
E- exactly.
That sounds reasonable.
Okay, the only problem I have, Rebecca, is, it's, it's, the wording is, is hereby extended to end of one, can it be stated, is hereby extended to?
Of course.
Okay, okay. So that date is November thirteenth?
The next scheduled meeting currently is November thirteenth.
What do we need to do, vote to extend the meeting to, ooh, geez. Uh?
Okay, make, uh.
Make a motion to.
I need a motion to continue to, uh, November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second it.
Okay, you, you're making a motion.
Oh, I'm.
So motion.
Sorry. I thought you were in the.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, unanimous. Okay, the next, um, continued hearing will be November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, okay? If you got any more questions, or whatever, you got any ideas, you know, come on back, all right? Okay.
That's not good. Huh? Uh, yeah. Can we call on meeting? Oh, yes. No, 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 it's private. It's private, yes. Two houses, make sure he puts it in the deed. Dina. Next time you come in, I mean, just make sure you say you're putting everything in writing in the deeds for the maintenance agreement. That's the biggest thing, that's what they're all worried about. And that's what we did, I did, when we did our, uh, the, all, we did three. And we put them right in the deed and the lawyer sat down and showed them. So just make sure you stress that, they'll go away, okay? Yeah. That one, that one would be the funny one. Do a root name. Yeah, exactly. It might be cheap, but maybe easier. What the hell was this? What? I'll take a pond, do a boat, we buy it.
Sorry, Jane?
Oh, just missed it.
What I missed?
Nothing. Anything fine.
What I missed? Oh, the ministry?
We didn't vote on the way.
Where, is this the first?
Yeah, this is.
You don't want Bennington.
What is he?
Huh? Yeah. You know what, you want, you want a.
It's actually Miss Sparkler.
Thank you.
Bennington's a nice boat. South Bay, South Bay. Yeah, well, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't know, I would say.
So the other guy backed out. The other guy, the hypnotic. This one wants a plot to. Makes sense. It's tight, but. It's better than that somewhere. This is a forty-year-old plant.
Yeah, I don't know, it's even gone a second. This goes back to when they tore down the old station, is what it is.
What station, the gas station?
Yeah, when they tore down the old, built the Gary station, that's what this is.
Oh. S D P W nineteen oh five.
Yeah, my wife sees this on my truck of my seat, she'd kill me.
Nineteen forty-six. And nineteen twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, it's access.
Yeah. No, I mean, I tried to pull up.
He does have a lot of though.
Okay, um, are we gonna open the three oh one Main Street?
Hmm?
Zong Yang, is that your name?
Yes.
Okay, site plan review. You're seeking a waiver from site plan review and it looks like you gave us a site plan drawn back middle of the last century.
So this just show you the.
Go to the podium.
So this, and the survey just showed the driveway, I mean, between the two ninety-nine and the two ninety-three, and so we both shared the driveways.
Have you picked an engineer?
Yes, working on it. But this is a valid survey, I mean.
The applicant has come before the board to state that he does not want to go through the site plan review process for the potential businesses he had talked to the board about previously at this point in time. He would like to go before the board to waive site plan review for a different kind of business, which would be an online business only that he believes will not trigger site plan review. However, at the same time, this is an interim because in the long term, he hopes to have somebody in the site that will be utilizing parking and traffic. So just to clarify, he is working with an engineer for a much future project, but currently, for the time being, is looking for a waiver for an online internet business.
Yes, and at the last meeting, I mean, the order board members gave favor for the limited customer, I mean. So that's what I bring today, I mean. I think the online retail store from Ben and also the broad showroom from Frank would be a good fit for this kind of business in this location and it's good for Tom. So I would like to, Tom, is approve for both of these, but I will work with them and only will pick up one.
I mean, one of the things that I'm gonna ask for, I mean, it doesn't show any, any parking spaces on it whatsoever at all. And that is the biggest problem.
Yes, limited, the only, the boat showroom will be only by appointment, that's what you preferred last time. And the online store will be only these two people working on, there'll be only one car. So the, there'll be no any effect, I mean.
Okay, what is the business?
Then, can you explain to him, please?
My name's Ben of Bound Overalls. We're currently based in Newburyport, Mass. We manufacture and import denim overalls and sell them on Amazon. Our current space is a thousand square feet in Newburyport and we're looking to just grow a little bit. Basically, we process and manage our, some of our inventory there, but it's mostly just a staging area.
How many trucks a day?
At most, UPS would come three times a week.
Large orders, sir?
I mean, we ship eighty percent that comes from China direct to Amazon and then we just QC a small segment of each order. So UPS is pretty much what we're dealing with with freight.
And who's the boatman?
I'm in fact, and. I'm, I didn't catch that, what was that?
Oh, there was, I guess there's two businesses going.
Yeah.
Two, two businesses?
No, we'll be only pick up one.
I'm not sure. It's just from what I understand, it would be myself and the owner.
There's no tenant for the site right now. He's offered and he is discussing the potential site with multiple businesses for multiple uses for, that require multiple different operations. And he's just trying to feel out the board to see what the board would allow at that site that would require no permitting and no site plan review at this point in time.
I think it's worth noting that there'd be no customers on site and it's really, I mean, we're operating right downtown Middle Street in Newburyport. We've been there for a year and a half. We have no issues with trucks, deliveries, you know, it's literally just us.
Okay, are UPS what brings the product to you?
I mean, if I order a hundred cases, I'll have ten of them shipped to me just to check them out and then I'll sell them direct. But most of our inventory goes direct.
Are you selling them direct over the internet?
Exactly.
And how do you get rid of it?
Uh, well, the post office is conveniently located, but mostly that, yeah.
Okay. Alright.
Who's the engineer you picked?
Um, I'm.
Wait, you said he was in the process, but I didn't know, did you select?
Well, that's for the, I propose for small retail, so with the customer coming in, we'd ask for this kind of survey. But for right now, I mean, if we're the limited customer.
I don't think, my personal opinion is I don't think it matters. We've got a forty-year-old plan with notations that go back to the turn of the nineteenth century, back there on some of it. And we just need some stuff clarified. You're gonna have to get an engineer to at least go over that. Site plan review is a very quick process and if what he wants to put in there, I don't see that would go very long at all. So I don't know why you just go through the site plan review process and then you'll know your limitations for your next venture.
No, that plan take a lot of time, take almost four weeks.
It's thirty days, it's thirty days.
Take about ten thousand dollars to get the set plan, to do all those.
He's seeking a waiver from site.
Right, but because of the site, because of the old plans, because of the traffic light, because of the bridge, all of that has changed clearly since this plan, which is just a sketch from nineteen seventy-eight and then even with notations back to nineteen oh nine. You've gotta get a current plan.
When I finished this survey, I only show, I mean, we both shared the driveway on the other side.
Okay.
I did not intentionally to show you anything of a current law.
Can you, can you apply for a site plan review with an engineer and get it in tomorrow and we can have it reviewed in thirty days? That is the process for site plan review. It's not a long drawn-out process. And whatever plan that he designs for you, you're gonna be able to use later. It's not a waste and you're gonna need it. But this sounds like a good venture, but you've got trucks moving in and out, we have no idea of the space, parking is still an issue and even at a minimal amount of traffic in there, I tried to get in and out of there the other day. I mean, when you pull out, you're right there in the traffic line. I mean, you're right there. You can't go anywhere else. People can't turn in and you can't turn out while there's a line of traffic during the peak traffic times. I mean, we can get the traffic count from bobs, so that's pretty easy from McValley, but it's.
It's eleven thousand cars.
So you get that many cars, so we have to have line of sight. That is so tight against the bridge pylon right there where the anchor point is, where it has the date of the bridge. Okay, getting out, you're gonna have people stuck there.
Well, you have to be patient, I mean, it's safety job, you have to be waiting for a car down, there you go, I mean.
So. I'm not gonna be driving it, but I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be the one causing accidents there either without a site plan review. That's gotta come back and that's, it's a very simple, very quick process. You could've been halfway through it already.
He needs it.
Since you've been here. So my suggestion is that you get your engineer, I like what you're talking about for a business in there. I think it would work. I think you could expedite some things on site plan review to get this thing in there and be done. And then it's not gonna be a waste for you. If you've got a bigger venture, you wanna do something with that building later, improvements, et cetera, you'll have the baseline to do it. But the traffic, it's not like you're in the middle of nowhere. You are in the busiest, the only traffic.
Well, this is the property line.
Right next to a bridge in downtown Brooklyn, which two state highways run together.
I know, but the, but the engineering worker will not change anything, there's no way.
The engineering will, the engineering will comply with the regulation.
Yeah, and you know, it's okay, I mean, and that they stay high with you, not having the trucking for this accident. It's okay to stay in and out and.
And that's what that is, that's exactly what that's for.
I understand, but this, this property line that you have, the old property line has, have to changed. They've changed that because if you look at it now, your way down here, where it is now, they've changed the property line, so you need to get it resurveyed so we can see where the new property line is on this, on that side of the.
This survey, I wouldn't want to try showing you it, 'cause the driveway we share, but we.
I understand that, I understand it and I see you got, I mean, but is that your signature or is that the, is that Burke's? I mean Burke's signature? No, no way, I mean, so, nowood insurance hasn't, yep, I know you, yep, yeah.
I'm happy to jump in.
No, no, no problem, no, that's, that's fine. No, no, that's fine, no, but we're just.
It is very tough in there.
On the left-hand side of this, this property line has changed because of the bridge. And, and you don't show that and that, we need to see that so we can figure out how you can work this out. We're not trying to hold you up.
I know, but what it is, right now, if there's nothing will be changed.
I understand that. But we still, we still need to see this so we can approve it. I mean, we can't approve an old, old plot plan.
That's why what I said is that right now, I mean, if you don't have a main space, if you don't have a main showroom, if you only have one car, we get.
Sir, I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, but what we need is an updated plot plan. Line changes and everything so we can sign off on that, for parking and everything.
Yeah.
And I mean, we're not trying to hold you up on your businesses or anything. The ones you've showed are great.
Yeah.
That's awesome, but we need to know where this.
Could you put both of businesses in the building?
No.
I think there's some confusion when you say both businesses.
Well, we got one for a fontune business and then your business, that's, so that's, I mean, that's where we're.
You can't be a member of both of them, so.
You can't, you're memorable for both of them, so. The dungarees and.
Yeah.
No, it's not, Opto West approved that type of business.
Right.
You have to.
All, all, all we're looking for is a, a certified plot plan where the lines have changed now from the bridge, that's all we're looking for. And I know you have to hire an engineer and everything else, I know you're trying to get it reasonable, but, I mean, we can't vote on an old plot plan like this. And, uh.
But I won't try to, for the condition, you know, traffic, any, no additional traffic there. And in the future, I can, I can present it for.
I understand that, I understand, we understand the traffic situation, but we, we gotta show why that traffic situation is there now. Is because the sidewalk, the guardrail and everything has cut off your access to the front of the building, a lot of it. Because when it was an old gas station, you used to be able to drive right around and around and everything, and now you can't, so.
Yeah, but the, 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 the traffic data we show here is very safe, I mean, I'm waiting for the data from police department, they never give the data to show it's very much improved right now. And I can present it for later on for a different type of business, I mean, to buy a custom, I mean, parking, I mean.
Yeah.
Right now, it's only for the limited, I mean, limited, I mean, custom coming, I mean, there are no department for change for the traffic and all parking.
I understand, I understand that, sir, sir, I understand what you're trying to do and everything else. All, the board is trying to do is get a updated survey with the new lot lines.
Can we get the second, the second potential tenant up to explain his business?
Frank Rosetti, Linfield, Mass. What I'm looking to do there is, I was looking to get the waiver on that too, because I'm not gonna be doing much business there, this is a very part-time business, I'm a full-time realtor. This is a, there are no pontoon boat dealers in eastern Massachusetts that I could find anywhere, so I, I used to be in the boat business, and what I did is I, I hooked up with Bentley Boats in South Carolina, and I'm a dealer of theirs, and I'm just gonna stock two to three boats inside the building, nothing outside, no parking. I'm not gonna be there, all that would happen is on the internet, people would see the boats on the websites, they'd drive by, they'd make an appointment, I'd meet one customer there to look at a boat. They'd go in the showroom, see it, and order one, or whatever they do, there's gonna be no traffic at all. So mine would be very, there would be no UPS, nothing, because we'd bring a boats, the three boats, put them inside the building, and they'd be there for the whole winter, nobody would, we want it. They might come and look at them during the winter once or twice, but it's not, it's not a real busy business. They're complete boats, they come with the engines on, on the trailer, everything, just put them in there, and then when someone buys it, it just leaves. So they're not gonna be a very high volume, but it's just a part-time business, this operation works perfectly, just because the traffic does show that there's a boat business, a pontoon boat business available, and the sign will say by appointment only.
But as a realtor, do you see what we're trying to ask him to do?
Yes.
On the left hand side of the building?
Right, right, in my case, there's nothing needed outside.
Right, exactly.
It's just gonna be my own kinda stop and meet a customer, maybe another car, that's it, they'd fit under the canopy.
The back or the front?
Just in the front, they come in the canopy, in the three doors, there's three overhead doors.
Your business would be in the back?
No, no, he's, this would be one business or the other.
No, no, he.
This is a proposed business that I would like to have that spot, I'm sure the gentleman would like to have that spot, but it depends on what, how easy it is for it to happen, so.
Had they gone to the building inspector yet?
Well, that's why he's.
No, I have not.
Oh, no. No, the, the owner.
The businesses have not gone before the building commissioner at this time, the building commissioner has asked the landlord, the, the, the landowner to provide a plan and said that until he has a plan, he will no longer sit down and talk with him, so he needs to have a plan for the building in order to discuss the businesses. From my understanding of what I would be for.
That's what we're looking for here, I'd like to fly a motion just to go through the, the site plan review for this, because that, that's the easiest way you're gonna know, you're gonna know, you're gonna have to do it anyway, you can't even get a building permit. And it's a very quick process for what you're trying to do, I, I, like I said before, you would've been halfway through it since our last meeting if you had jumped on it right away. So I'd like to fly that motion, get this done, and then, and then get one of these businesses in there, that'd be great for Groveland, I think any one of them would be.
Absolutely.
I mean, if we can't put it there, let me tell you, don't go away, okay, we'll talk to you later. Okay, don't go away.
Okay, but I got that motion on the floor, anybody want to second that?
What's the motion?
Uh, just through site plan review.
Oh, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, you gotta do a site plan, that's it, okay? Both of these things interest me an awful lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So can you?
It'll be awesome.
Can you schedule meetings for the thirteen?
Do you have the engineer do it?
I, I can try ask them as quick as I can.
Yeah, do you know who he is?
I've had.
Highest in the, highest engineer in Woodfield?
I've had about four or five engineering firms contact me in regards to this property, I have talked to all five of them and invited them to come by and go through the process and discuss this with you at length. And I haven't heard back from any of them, any of the engineering firms that you've contacted and I've spoken with are, are great firms, and I would love to work with, with you and them to move this forward. But you, you need to stop sending the firms to the, to the office and choose one in order to move forward.
Which were the, which were the ones they picked?
Um, Hayes, T C, um.
Hayes.
Wright and Pierce, and there was another one.
Hayes is good.
Because I have to consider costs, there's, there's some, some engineering firm costs for twenties hours, some costs thirties hours.
No, it won't cost that much.
Was Hayes one, who talked to you from Hayes?
Uh, um.
Peter Oldman.
Yes, thank you.
Peter, Peter knows the regulations in the town, he's done a lot of work.
He's a good guy.
He's.
I have worked with Peter before many, many times.
Oh, okay, so you're all.
I mean, he, he did a lot for my house, I, I trust him too, I mean.
Okay.
He's expensive too, I mean.
I, you get what you pay for with engineers, I stick around here for a while, I think.
The building inspector won't let you have an occupancy, so you have to have this site plan.
Peter's a pretty, I mean, he's had, he's had plans before the board, the other, the other two engineers are not.
But still, at the same time, you're gonna need it for conservation as well, you, you foreign filed for an RDA and you haven't provided a plan for them.
But if you, if you, yeah, I'm working on it, but if you approve today, I can move forward, I can start in summer time, I don't know what will happen for next time.
But this plan is for all of us, this plan will be a, a stepping stone for, for all the boards and commissions in order to go through all of the procedures that you need to go through.
For the two businesses that are here that we're trying to get in, what's your, what's your potential start date? Yeah, just yell it out.
Twelve one.
It, it'll just, I would say the same, it would probably be in November, because you start remodeling.
Yeah, okay, so you've got your timetable, if, if he, if you're gonna pick Hayes, pick Hayes, get him on the, work a bit, we'll get right in there, and, and we'll be all set with that. Get him in here, and he can tell you the timeline, have you given him, have you given him any data yet to work with?
Yeah.
Okay, so then he should be able to do something.
That's not what I'm hearing from the engineers.
Oh.
But I, I, again, if they, if you're willing to, to authorize them to move forward, I've spoken with all of them, and they're, they're willing to move quickly to expedite this on, on your behalf for you, and they're willing to expedite this on behalf of the town, but I'm receiving a lot of mixed information from both your engineers that you've been speaking with and yourself. So I just need to know what your plan is, and I will be willing to do whatever I can do in order to move this as quickly as physically possible.
Okay, can you schedule for thirteen, and I will ask them, and they will do as quick as they can.
Why don't you have your engineer that you pick brief the board?
Call, call, call.
And have them call, and we'll.
Call her, and she'll, she'll put us on.
Okay, 'cause we gotta know if, because no sense of appointment, they're not gonna be ready. So, so you gotta get them going and get confirmation on them. Okay? All right. Thank you very much, what else do we have?
Thanks for coming.
Yep.
I mean, I don't want to lose it, but.
Yeah, there's, there's other sites in Groveland too.
There's other sites.
Yeah, so don't, don't lose faith in Groveland, hopefully he can get your something going, I mean, I, both of them sound great.
Thank you.
We, we, we have other people that you could get a bang, just like that. I mean, this one, the real problem is, we do need a site plan because of egress.
Yeah, the building inspector won't give them a.
Right, exactly.
No, I know, I know, this is the problem.
Coming here is like backwards.
Okay. It's a simple thing you gotta do, I mean, I think, you, you heard what we told you to do last meeting, and you should've done it. That's all I can tell you, I know you've been going around talking to every board in this town. We told you what to do. Okay?
Okay.
You gotta do it, that's it.
Okay.
Maybe I should've been harder on you last time. Okay?
I think he's got it.
All right.
I think he's got it, he's got, he's sticking with base, he's got a good engineer to get him right through the process, that'll be very extradition. So.
Okay, thank you. This is my first meeting, so.
Thanks for showing, so, no problem.
And I, sorry, I didn't mean to be rude.
Don't think I know it.
They're familiar, I'm Brian Punell.
Brian Waller.
Some over at Norwood.
Nor Insurance.
You should've, you should've told us that, because we really wanted.
He's taken over Nor Insurance.
We wanted a comment from Norwood.
Well, I kinda flagged up, but I didn't, I didn't wanna jump into the middle of it, I'm new to the city.
It has, it has to be a type of business in there, that the traffic, this is coming in right by you.
Of course.
If there is any.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is limited, it's limited.
Well, that's what the site review does too, so stick with the process.
Yeah.
I, I, in my own mind, I, I don't know what, how the post office thinks, unfortunately, it's a government agency.
Yeah.
If it was a real business, I've been out of there years ago.
I know.
Because it's not a place for it.
No, not anymore.
No.
I'm sure at some point it was, but I, I wasn't here that.
Way back when.
I know, I've only been around for about a year or so.
Okay.
Since Peter passed away, so I took over the agency, but long and short of it, I, I've just spoken to him recently, just the other day about the, he had asked about, you know, we both own the driveway, yeah, that's a little liberal.
Okay. Well, that's why we need a plan on that.
So that's, so I'm in the process, just so you know, of doing a survey for our whole.
For your property.
Two ninety three and two ninety one, so we've got a good idea. So if nothing's been done at the next one, maybe we could.
Oh, the.
Who's doing the survey?
Well.
Used to be where Pop Van used to be.
Exactly, yeah, so two ninety one, and then two ninety three is Norwood. Um, local Brian Parmenter, who's, I think it's PMS or something like that, or, he's a client.
Okay.
So, we asked him to take a look at it, and he's done some staking and stuff like that, just, it, to me, as far as kinda just a preliminary, so I.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Where, where are the boundaries?
Yeah, the site plan picked that up too, 'cause it's within a common area, so maybe you can share a disc?
And, and they actually did, I did see a gentleman who, I think it was Mrs. Delafour, who was there before. There was someone who came in and was staking off stuff before it was sold, so I'm not really sure why that's so old, but.
Yeah.
I'm happy to cooperate, I think I can do.
Thank you very much. Mike? Question? Since I, I got, I may have gotten this wrong. On Maple Street.
Let's, let's do two more items first, well.
Oh, okay.
We got two more items, and then we can, and then we can ask Mike.
Oh, okay.
All right.
I thought you were in for this.
Yeah, Mike lives here anyway, so don't worry about it.
Yeah.
He does.
All right, go, what's the, you got?
He's got nothing else to do, so he can't.
No, I mean, what's our meeting?
So I, I just wanted to confirm and see if the board would make a, a motion to schedule the next two month meetings, so that we can schedule any upcoming applications, so that would be the month of December and January, so the dates would be, if we did the first and third, third, first and third Tuesday of the month, it would be December fourth and December eighteenth. And then in January, because of the holiday on New Year's, it would, the first is out of question, but January eighth and January twenty second, we could do. But the twenty second, we would have to meet in the Board of Selectmen conference room instead of this room, because the Board of Selectmen are in session on that day due to the Martin Luther King holiday.
Oh, if it's late, we can go, oh, that's right, we took the table out.
The Board of Selectmen conference room is just as, it's cozy.
Okay.
Would those dates work for the board?
I don't even have my schedule for December or January, so it wouldn't matter yet for me.
Why don't we just say yes anyhow?
Yeah, go, go first, and we'll move around.
And then the last is just to update you and let you know that the November, for the November thirteenth meeting, that will be held in the Board of Selectmen conference room, because the Board of Selectmen have their meeting scheduled for this room due to Veterans Day.
Okay.
So that's eleven what?
That's on eleven thirteen.
Yeah.
Thirteen.
And I'll send a reminder email with that information, but just to update you.
Okay.
It's the twelve spectrum step.
Yeah, okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay, motion due?
Oh, well, old business, did you have some old business?
How about the?
We had old business.
Took care of the review.
Yeah, all the invoices and minutes, and that's all set, so.
So we got a little business, yeah, you know, I, I looked at that pontoon thing, I'm thinking Harper.
Yeah, turn the meeting, yeah, great, motion due?
Motion due, second.
Aye.
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 Thank you for watching.